I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam clerk, please call the robe.
Justice Burns.
Here.
Justice Jones.
Here.
Justice Johnson.
Here.
Justice Seth.
Here.
Justice Sterling.
Present.
Justice Dr. Winston.
Here.
Thank you. May I ask the Reverend Freeman to lead us in meditation? For prayer.
Testing. There are many people and many faiths. And so whatever faith tradition each individual hold, to that higher power, reach out your prayer, your meditation, and your soul. To the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, to the God of Sarah, Hagar, and Ruth. We come before you, Lord God, many people, many faiths. You are God who is known by many people. Some call you Elohim, and some call you Allah, and some call you the God of the mountain, and some call you the Father of Jesus the Christ. And some, Lord God, like Mahatma K. Gandhi, just say that there are many gods. And in this world, we are reborn into good karma and bad karma. We come before you, who are holy of holy, as we stand on holy ground individually and collectively, asking you to bless each breath of life in this room. We ask you to bless those that sit, Lord God. We ask you to bless each and every one of those women, Lord God, elected officials, Lord God. We ask you to bring them on one accord. We ask you to bless the village of Salt Village and its people. We ask you to bless our fire chief, our police chief. We ask you just to bless, Lord. And then when it's all said and done, anyone that has a philosophy of an eye for an eye, Gandhi says that leaves the whole world blind. So help us to see the future of this village. We love you, we praise you, we magnify you, and we lift you up. And every person can close their meditation out in the tradition in which they are comfortable. Amen, Amin.
Amen. Amen, thank you very much. Even though the enumeration on your agendas are not exact, I am moving toward number two. Even though it says number three, and we will do move forward along that line. So, number two is executive closed session. And I ask for a motion to recess the closed session to discuss personnel matters, employment, and compensation. I'm not certain if we have any litigation. Attorney, can you advise? So we will include litigation to that as well. May I have that motion, please?
So.
It's been moved by Trustee Johnson. May I have a second? I'm sorry, it's been... Thank you, Trustee Johnson. Justice Jones. So it's been moved by Trustee Johnson, seconded by Trustee Jones, that we recessed closed session to discuss personnel matters, pending litigation, employment, and compensation. Uh, Mayor, not Mayor, oh, Jesus. Uh, clerk, please call the robe.
Justice Burns.
Yes.
Justice Jones. Justice Johnson.
Yes.
Justice Seth.
Yes.
Justice Sterling.
Yes.
Justice Dr. Winston.
Yes.
Thank you. Our residents, guests, family, and friends, know that we may be in closed session for a while. I appeal to you to wait for us. Thank you, and to do so with patience. We'll be back as soon as we can. May we have one of the staff members to grab the agenda?
Hold on.
And please make the...
Do you have one, Fitz?
Yeah, I need one.
Okay, could you share with the younger one here? Does she get the copy while we're in executive session? Thank you for letting me know.
Oh, I don't have one. That's what I was telling you, she don't have any more on the table. That's what the mob, you keep that, that's what the mob. Yeah, this is a budget here. She's gonna bring some out.
I'm sorry.
That's what I was telling you, there's no more back here.
Stop my camera, cause I'm wasting valuable. I said I'm wasting.
I think we have five more.
We greatly appreciate your patience and that you're still here with us. Because we have some exciting developments that we're hoping will transpire just a little and just a little bit. However, we have a couple, a couple things to do. First, I would need a motion to reconvene open meeting. May I have such a motion?
So.
It's been moved by Trustee Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
It's by Trustee Dr. Winston. Seconded. Any questions to make? It's not needed. Uh, clerk, please call the robe.
Justice Burns.
Yes.
Justice Johnson.
Yes.
Justice Jones. Justice Seth.
Yes.
Justice Sterling.
Yes.
Justice Dr. Winston.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to number three, approval of minutes. And our village clerk, David Williams, will leave this space.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, we are going to, um, take the first three, A, B, and C, for the executive session. We are going to table those for the next meeting when there is an executive session where the minutes can be reviewed. We will, however, approve the Journal of Proceedings for the July 8th special budget meeting, the July 8th regular board meeting, the July 15th... the July fifteenth committee of the whole meeting, July twenty-second regular board meeting, and the January, July twenty-ninth special reconvene budget meeting. So I'm asking if you are agreeable to a consensus to approve items D, E, F, G, and H as a consensus, um, item.
Thank you, uh, clerk Williams, may I have a motion to approve a consent agenda looking at three D, E, F, G, and H? May I have that motion, please?
So.
It's been moved by trustee Johnson, may I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Burns. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Trustee Jones. Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Satt.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Wilson.
Did you say abstain?
Abstain.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded and all, we have a majority of those who are in agreement and one abstention for them, uh, uh, we can move on to public comment number five, I do want to read this and I would like for you to heed what I'm reading. All questions and comments must be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter concerning the business of Salt Village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may not engage in debate, counter replies, or rebuttals, okay? Mayor Campbell Pruitt, me, will respond to questions and comments as appropriate. I am going to ask that all of our guests, as you are giving your public comments, for you to refrain from using person names or implications of individuals. This has been found to assist us maintain decorum and we wish to remain in good order. Any questions? You don't have to answer, I am going to ask anyone that would like consideration to bring public comments, to get in front of the podium right here and to get in line now. At a certain point, we will bring it to close and you will not be able to engage thus. If you have a public comment, please get in line now. Please get in line in the order that you stand, we will not, uh, no. Sure, no, I'm not talking to you, I'm sorry, I'm talking, I need the first person at the mic now. Let's not prolong this, thank you. Anyone else, I'm going to do a three count. Anyone else, counting, three, two, one. We are at the end of that line, the gentleman in the red hat will be the last person to bring forth public comment. I turn it over now to the village clerk.
So I'll expect my couple of seconds back. My name is Francine Anderson, just to make it clear, I have a couple of concerns. Uh, first of all, on today's agenda, I see a number nine and it says for, uh, reports of officers that the mayor is planning to appoint a blank person for fire chief and a blank person for a police chief. I am here to say that that was done back in April. The Illinois Attorney General told you that that was inappropriate and so here we go again today. So are you gonna continually, willfully not obey the laws? Because I think that's a problem for me, it might not be a problem for everybody else, but it then makes your appointment, again, able to go back to the Attorney General. Put my name on it. Last week I was at this meeting and Mr. Finch talked about and had a discussion about combining different parts of the accounts when you did your budget meeting. In that budget meeting, I expressed my concern about making sure you continue to separate water and sewage. So today I'm saying that again in front of all of this audience so that those that live here in Salt Village will understand that yes, we using plain old simple accounting and it's called fun accounting, all government is ran with fun accounting. So, Mr. Finch, if those are gonna be the same accounting numbers, then fine. But for you to combine it, it's already combined. So if you're gonna take those numbers and combine them and make them one, I don't think that's fair to the citizens because we pay sewage, we pay water, we pay utility taxes. And I would like to see them separated, cause I'm only speaking for Francine. The other thing is that last time we were here to, I left at ten forty-five, I think most people were here till eleven. I am hoping that today, this meeting will be more precise and that trustees and the mayor do not have a comment behind everything everyone has said or will be saying, because that was the reason why we stayed so long. And the other thing is, you to tell us not to use names, I think part of being disrespectful to the community because each person there wears a title, a trustee, and they all have names and I do not like blankly addressing anything. So I call you Mayor Marvin Cameron Pruitt, I don't call you just Mayor because I think honor that goes with the title.
I'm sorry, uh, what I do now is different from what was done in the past. When appropriate, if I can respond, I respond directly after the person rather than to wait till the entire line finish and then respond. I have a couple of items, um, one was addressing the blank that is in, actually it is item eight because the enumeration was off and the blank is there but by the time the motion to approve, the name will be provided, almost, no. And it's really akin to how we normally would even do our new business in terms of the financials where a lot of times that line is left blank and it's stated before the motion is called. So there is nothing askew about doing that. I'm going to ask that the speaker refer to Robert rules of order where it really states emphatically that names versus titles or titles versus the name is really more appropriate and we operate under Robert rules of order to the greatest extent possible, next.
Thank you, I want to apologize for my throat, I had a vocal cord surgery, so apologize for if I have any issues. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak. I've been a developer here, took a risk forty years ago. Open, uh, buying the property in the corridor here for a salt point. And I came back a few years back and worked together with administration here. Uh, James, James Gersich with Gersich Inc. and Gersich Development is who came out here into the corridor forty years ago. And we took a risk on this corridor and, and it was a success, we created some economic growth in our Salt Point Park. And within eight to ten years, we filled that park. And we found, we come to find out that we didn't have enough water pressure because at the time, they felt that we needed two water towers. The one water tower came in, we never were able to develop the other forty acres that is, is existing. We have some good news that we're going to try to bring in development on that forty acres. And so I'll be working with the village and in the interim, uh, as you know, we, we tried to do a design build development, mixed use development in our park with the understanding that we thought there was an existing TIF for seven years that we come to find out had expired, even though we were told that it was gonna be extended twelve more years. At that time, we were bringing some synergy to the town because we had met with Vincent Churan and his wife, who were the original owners of Harold's Chicken, who wanted to do their concept with their sports bar brewery there and we were gonna do our mixed use restaurant together with the cannabis dispensary lounge and a gaming facility. Unfortunately, we had. Unfortunately, we relocated and we ended up going over to the property over here where the black salt is. We're up for consideration tonight and I would very much like you guys to take it into consideration, the board and everybody here, cause we've been here for thirty months trying to get this project done and I think we can bring more expanded development to that area. Not just with the, not just with our project there, but we also have the retail center that we intend to not only bring some life to it, but we'd like to see us expand on that vacant corner as well. So I appreciate your time and letting me, allowing me to speak.
Thank you, sir.
David Fields, good evening, Madam Mayor, Board of Trustees. Madam Mayor, I'm a little stunned right now, uh, cause I was looking on the agenda and I see as to where as far as the fire chief position goes. Now, I'm a little thrown because I thought we had a fire chief. And if you were planning to replace our current fire chief, I would say shame on you because he is impeccable. He has put his family, he has took this village before his family sometime. He has contributed, not just to this board, not just to Salt Village, but also to our school board. Our children are in love with him because he does the things that a fire chief is supposed to do. And if there's anybody else that you have on your mind, other than the person that currently hold that position, it's got to be something wrong. And if the residents of Salt Village stand for that, then you are no better than her. Because this should not be happening, we should not be replacing our, our fire chief. The best fire chief that I can see anywhere, anywhere and just over a month ago, you was giving him one hundred percent praises, praising him for everything that he has did. And there we stand before you today and we see as to where there's a blank slate in the place of police chief. Shame on you, Mayor, that should not be happening. And if our residents, if y'all voice, if y'all sit here and y'all allow this to happen, then shame on you all also. Because this person has did nothing wrong in this village. His arm reaches from one end of this village to the next and he goes out of his way to help anybody in this village. And a lot of our trustees know this, even our mayor know this. That's the reason why I'm stunned about this, to see that there's a blank in the place of chief. Come on now, when this thing gonna get right? I said it a while back, I asked you a question, Madam Mayor, I said, Madam Mayor, what are you up to? There's something going on here and it's starting to show, it's starting to show. Because if anybody else has put in the place of this fire chief, other than our current person, I tell you all, heads is gonna rise and eyebrows are gonna tilt. And trust me, it's gonna be some mess going on here in Salt Village.
Thank you, sir, for your comments and I would just like residents and especially those who attend each and every me- meeting to be reminded that quite a while back, it was announced that all positions would need to be applied for. At that point in time, we explained what the process would be and if anyone just happened not to remember that process, then I have no problem with explaining it a little bit down the line, but not right this evening. Because just like the first resident said, we do not want to be here until eleven o'clock this evening. And so with that being said, uh, clerk Williams, can we move forward?
David Smith, resident. I just want to double down briefly on what Mr. Fields just said, because I'm also in support of Chief Barrett. He's a resident, he's been fire chief for years and he's done no wrong. There's nothing that you can point to to say he did a bad job, at least in my opinion. And I've been in every village board meeting for at least the past four or five years. I pay attention to everything and I don't understand why it would even be a consideration to hire someone else. He's one of the most underpaid fire chiefs in the south suburbs and yet he gives his all and he's a resident. So his care level is on a different level than just salary. It's a care level from a resident standpoint, which should matter. Unfortunately, it doesn't appear like it doesn't, but I'm not gonna draw opinions just quite yet because you made just a point, you could prove us wrong. I'm not gonna speak on Mr. Sanders because I don't know much about him as your police, uh, appointee. I do want to speak on some things though, if, if, as far as what you spoke last week. You sat here in front of everybody in here and you referred to the Illinois Attorney General's office as a joke. You also sat here in response to my response and said that people were harassing you through the Attorney General's office. And let me just read you the definition because I do my research, you should know that by now, which is why I'm really dumbfounded by why you say and do some of the things that you do. Harassment refers to words or behavior that threatens, intimidates, or demeans a person. Harassment is unwanted, uninvited, and unwelcome and causes nuisance alarm or substantial emotional distress without a legitimate purpose. Well ma'am, you have given me several legitimate purposes. Case in point, exhibit A, for those who thought I was joking last week, this is the finding opinion from the Attorney General's office regarding your illegal appointment. And again, there are several other cases that are outstanding right now regarding your illegal maneuvers, disregarding the Illinois Municipal Code. As someone who's about to appoint a police chief tonight, I don't understand why your administration is hell bent on circumventing our Illinois state statutes. It's unnecessary and it's unbecoming of someone of your position. Finally, I just want to know, when am I gonna get the answers? Or when is the Attorney General gonna get the answers to the request that they've been asking? And I'll be here every week until they do, or I'll see you all in court.
Thank you, sir. Uh, a couple of people have mentioned the support of Chief Barrett. And I would be remiss if I did not give him my own personal accolades because he is a fine gentleman. You're absolutely right when you say that he put his salary underneath his desire. That is absolutely correct and I applaud the chief for that as well. We have a process in place to make the recommendations for chiefs, two that we will be making this evening. We will be honoring that process, but not discounting the individual for. for whom he is, the service that he's provided, and how noble he is. And with that, I am ready to move forward to uh, number five, ordinances and resolutions. For those of you who were not here when we started, the numbers are just a little off because it went from number one to number three. So I don't want that to throw you for a loop. So right now, we are on number five as we look at ordinances and resolutions. And five A, may I have a motion to approve an ordinance amending section five, compensation slash employee travel and reimbursement in the, in Salt Village, in the Salt Village 2017 Employee Handbook for the Village of Salt Village, Cook County, Illinois. May I have that motion? It's been moved by trustee Sapp, seconded by trustee Jones. Any debate or comment? Hearing none, may I ask Clark to call the roll?
Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Trustee Jones. Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Sepp. Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Winston.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to B, may I have a motion to approve a resolution amending a designation of an authorized agent to the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund for the Village of Salt Village, and specifically allowing the mayor to serve.
So move.
I'm sorry, who seconded? Justice Jones. Thank you. We have a proper motion on the floor to appoint a designated authorized agent. Is there any questions, comments? Hearing none, Madam Clark, please call the roll.
Trustee Jones. Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Sepp. Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Winston.
Yes.
Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to C, may we have a motion to approve an ordinance amending chapter eighty-two regarding the cannabis zoning for the Village of Salt Village, Cook County, State of Illinois. May I have that motion?
So move.
I'm sorry, who seconded it? Okay. Can you do me a favor going forth? Um, please allow me to ask for a second so that I can recognize you and know who you are, because my head is down and I'm not seeing it here. And sometimes I don't recognize everyone's voice. But we have a motion and a second on the floor to accept, uh, to approve an ordinance amending chapter eighty-two regarding cannabis zoning. Any question, comments? Hearing none, Village Clark, please call the roll.
Trustee Johnson.
No.
Trustee Sepp. Trustee Sterling.
No.
Trustee Dr. Winston.
Yes.
Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Trustee Jones. Yes.
It's a tie, is that right? Uh, because it is a tie vote, uh, the mayor gets to break the tie. And I say no. The motion failed. Moving on. Number five D, may I have a motion to approve an ordinance of the Village of Salt Village, Cook County, granting a special use permit for the operation of an adult-use cannabis dispensary on the property located at sixteen ninety-nine through one hun- I mean seventeen fifteen Salt Trail, Salt Village, Illinois. May I have that motion?
So move.
May I have a second? I'm sorry, who asked for who seconded it? Thank you. Raise your hand, please, going forth. Thank you. We have a motion on the floor where trustee Burns, motion trustee Sapp seconded to approve the ordinance to allow for a special use permit for an adult-use cannabis dispensary. Clark, please call the roll.
Trustee Sepp.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling.
No.
Trustee Dr. Winston.
Yes.
Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Trustee Jones. Trustee Johnson.
No.
There is a tie. The mayor breaks the tie. The mayor says no. Moving on to E, motion to approve an ordinance amending section two sixty-eight of the Municipal Code of the Village of Salt Village entitled Standing Committees. May I have a motion dealing with standing committees?
So move.
It's been moved by trustee Dr. Winston. May I have a second? And your name is? Thank you. Madam Clark, please call the roll.
Trustee Sterling.
No.
Trustee Dr. Winston.
Yes.
Trustee Burns.
No.
Trustee Jones. Trustee Sepp. Trustee Johnson.
No.
Please give me the vote count.
Vote count is...
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, let's move on. What? They're not-
They're not using their mics, so we can't even-
Yeah, and, and that wasn't your mic, so I can't even hear you now, okay?
Please respond accordingly to what was just suggested. We're moving on to four. I mean to F, motion to approve an ordinance implementing a municipal grocery retailer's occupation tax and a municipal grocery tax for the Village of Salt Village. May I have that motion?
So move.
May I have a second? Who? Thank you. It's been moved by trustee Sapp regarding the grocery retailer's occupation tax and blah, 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 blah. Trustee, I mean trustee, I mean trustee, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Sterling.
No.
Trustee Dr. Winston.
Yes.
Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Trustee Jones. Trustee Johnson.
No.
Trustee Sepp.
Yes.
I vote yes. Moving on, moving on to G. I need a motion to approve an ordinance pertaining to travel, meal, and lodging expenses for the Village of Salt Village. May I have a motion?
So move.
I will accept Dr. Winston's, uh, motion. May I have a second?
Second.
And who made that second? Thank you. It's been moved by, um, trustee Dr. Winston, seconded by trustee Sapp. Any questions, comments? So please call the roll.
Trustee Dr. Winston.
Yes.
Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Trustee Jones. Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Sepp. Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Thank you. Denominously, thank you very much. Moving on to H. Motion to approve an ordinance amending chapter two in the administration of the Municipal Code of Salt Village, Illinois by adding a new section two dash eighty-five. May I have that motion? May I have a second?
Second.
Who made that second? Trustee Sterling. Thank you. It's been moved by trustee Sapp, seconded by trustee Sterling to add a new section point, two point eight five to chapter two of our Municipal Code. Clark, please call the roll.
Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Trustee Jones. Trustee Johnson.
No.
Trustee Sepp.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling.
No.
Trustee Winston, Dr. Winston.
Yes.
Hi, Mayor.
Mayor votes yes. Moving on, which is now new business, which is number six, and we're looking at financial matters. I need a motion to approve transfers payroll and accounts payable distribution in the combined amount of six hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, four hundred and sixty-five dollars rather, and four cent. May I have that motion?
So move.
May I have a second?
Second.
And who made that second?
Trustee Dr. Winston.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions, comments? Hearing none, please call the roll, clerk.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Sepp.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Winston.
Yes.
Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Denominously approved, thank you very much. Uh, there's a letter of agreement to be placed on file. And this was a result of the committee of the whole meeting this past, last week rather, where we had a person to come before us uh, asking for a letter of support for the Salt Trail Mall development. That letter was written and sent. So that letter is on file in the clerk's office. Moving on to the reports of officers. First one is me, Marv Campbell Pruitt, the mayor. And I'm asking for a motion to approve the appointment of Mr... Thank you. Know that this is the recommendation from the evaluation team. And I concur, so I am asking for a motion to appoint Mr. Keith Dam. And if approved, I will be asking the clerk to administer the oath of office. So the motion on the floor is to approve the appointment of Mr. Keith Dam as fire chief and to provide the oath of office to that newly appointed fire chief. It's so done. May I have that motion? May I have a second?
Second.
And who made that second?
Trustee Burns.
Thank you. It's been moved, seconded, questioned, debated. Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Johnson.
No.
Trustee Sepp.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling.
No.
Trustee Winston, Dr. Winston.
Yes.
Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
The mayor votes yes. We will take a minute while- We, excuse me, is there some discord in the room?
They heard.
They can be heard. And without a verbal expression. Either in, in here or out there, your choice. You need a five-minute break?
That was a lot.
Does anyone else feel free for a break? Nothing, we'll check them. We shall move forward. Please move forward. I'm going to ask for silence. And I won't ask again. I'm going to, no, I said, officer, officer in the hallway. If we don't have silence, I'm going to ask that you remove whoever is talking. Thank you. Let's move forward.
I, Keith Dam, beset and swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties assigned and perform all the duties incurred as fire chief for the Village of Salt Village. I shall protect to the best of my ability the lives and property of the citizens of our village. And I, Keith Dam, shall bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the Charter of laws and ordinances of the Village of Salt Village so long as I shall be chief of the Salt Village Fire Department according to the best of my ability. So help me God. Good luck.
I forgot that. Can we do that on Tuesday?
By the fourth day? No, sir. Maybe ask for a lot to join you?
Yes. Pictures.
One more time for our new fire chief. Know that the badges, the badge did not come in today as was anticipated. So hopefully, on Tuesday, the badge will be here and you will be pinned. But I don't expect your wife to travel with you ninety miles just to pin you. But typically, that is what would happen, so please- so please forgive us. The next motion on the floor would be to approve the appointment of Mac Sanders as police chief. And then, yes, just to approve the appointment of Mac as the fi- uh, the police chief. May I have a motion?
So low.
May I have a second? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Mac Sanders as police chief for the village of Soft Village. Any questions or comments? Hearing nine, clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Sett.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Winston.
Yes.
Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Fantastic. That was unanimously passed as well. May I ask Mr. Sanders to come forward to be issued an oath of office?
I, Mac Sanders, besomely swear, besomely swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties assigned and perform all the duties assigned and perform all of these incumbent upon me as chief of police for the village of Soft Village, protect to the best of my ability the lives and property of the citizens of our village. And I, Mac Sanders, so bear the truth, faith, and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the state of Illinois, and Charter of laws and ordinances of the village of Soft Village, while providing leadership and serving with loyalty. And our Soft Village Police Department, according to the best of my ability. So help me God. So to try and support for this twenty-sixth day of August, God bless you.
The chief would like to say something?
Everyone here, I am your new advocate. I'm the police advocate now. I wanna, I gotta thank God for giving me the strength to be here. It's been a long, long travel. I look forward to working with everyone, talking, speaking, learning, and getting past anything that we can. I appreciate everybody that came out. Have these people with police, have all those family mentors, all that, so we came, we came the way we are as people. People first, you understand that? I know you got it, whatever you're doing. So, but we people first, thank you, chief. Thank you, chief, chief, all you chiefs, and thank you, God, thank you.
I would absolutely love to have a picture with our two new chiefs.
Thank you. Now, but as both of you chiefs can stand from here straight up on stage, so they have a picture of all of us. And those of you who are outside let us know here. You can see all of us from your base. Let me have a shot.
The next item, even though it has to village clerk, the mayor will do the honors of presenting a proclamation in observance of the Constitution Week, and I'm going to just wait a second for everyone exits that aren't leaving. We thank you for your support, those of you who are walking out. Okay, this is a proclamation in observance of Constitution Week, whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the two hundred and thirty-eighth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities, and whereas public law nine-one-five guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Marva Campbell Pruitt, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the state of Illinois and the village of Soft Village, do hereby proclaim the week of seventh, September seventeenth through twenty-third as constitutional week, and to urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all rights and responsibilities with that privilege involved. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the village of Soft Village to be affixed this twenty-sixth day August of the year of the Lord, two thousand twenty-two. Legal counsel? Do you have a report?
No report.
Village clerk, we still need to double back, even though she's not enumerated there. Village clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say, um, last week I made a request for a deputy village clerk um, to be in, to be here in my absence. Um, people didn't understand, so I explained the duties of the deputy clerk, I'm not going to repeat it. I'd be happy to tell you, uh, again offline what that, those duties are. But in the event that the clerk is not able to be here, I, my office is very important to me, and the integrity of my office is very important. Um, in the past, when I was the clerk, I had a deputy, um, for the eight years I was clerk. And the deputy serves at the dais and as needed, sign documents in the event that I'm not unable to make the meetings. When I had a deputy clerk before, I think I missed five meetings. About, the deputy clerk is volunteer position. If anybody is interested in being, uh, my assistant to help as needed. But there was a misunderstanding. One of the residents in the audience made up a comment that there's no position in the budget for the deputy clerk. I'm gonna say it again. This is a volunteer position that requires no salary. So before it gets out there that the clerk is looking for someone to do her job and get paid, that is absolutely not true. So I am asking for people who are interested in performing the duties of the deputy clerk to contact me so I can ask my board members to approve your appointment as a deputy clerk, as a volunteer position. And lastly, I would like to invite everyone in Soft Village to this week's prayer walk on Sunday, starting at the village hall. We have local pastors who are starting a prayer walk down Torrance Avenue, two-twenty-third street, and some additional streets that we're gonna be walking and driving on. For those of you who can't walk, you can drive. This includes the entire village of Soft Village. We'd like to pray on our village. We'd like to help heal our village because the village needs healing. I invite my board members to drive in my truck with me in the back of my truck, anybody who wants it. If you don't want to walk, you can get in the back of my truck. And this is open invitation. We'll be at the village hall at twelve o'clock on Sunday. If you'd like to start with us at Crossroads Church on Sunday, that's at ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, a light snack, and ending up at the village hall at noon to start the prayer walk. I hope to see many of you there, and I hope that we can help heal our land and pray over it. Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Thank you. Village engineer, Melanie Arnold.
Good evening, mayor, madam clerk, board of trustees and residents. Um, I'll be brief tonight, but I just wanted to share with you, uh, two projects. We put together exhibits that I'm gonna leave here at village hall with the mayor. Um, it'll be displayed out in the front just to let you know about two projects that, uh, water infrastructure projects. One is already underway, and the other one will be starting very shortly. Um, the first project that's shown right here is the Merrill Avenue Water Main Replacement Project. This is the project that is being funded by a million-dollar D C E O grant. Um, it's going to be replacing approximately two thousand feet of existing six-inch main with new eight-inch ductile iron main. There'll be, um, eight hydrants, and, um, the residential water services associated with this, uh, replacement will be replaced as well. Um, prod, work has already started on that. They've done some milling of the roadway. Um, they're doing some exploratory excavations this week, getting project, or, um, I'm sorry, that was last week. They've already installed three hundred feet of, uh, new mains starting at the north end of the project site. So they are really motivated to work quickly and get this job installed. So, um, we do have a Robinson resident engineer on site that's out there doing daily construction observations. So if you have questions or concerns, you can look for her, um, or reach out to, um, to Anthony or myself if you have any questions. Um, and then the other project, which is not quite ready to start, but we have an anticipated start date. I just received it today from the county of, um, September eighth. That is going to be the village-wide hydrant replacement project. Um, Build Up Cook is, is provided five hundred thousand dollars in, um, funds to replace the hydrants. So there is going to be twenty-eight hydrants that are replaced across the village. Um, you can see the, um, the hydrants that will be replaced on that, um, exhibit. And the hope is that this is the first phase, and that there will be more money coming in subsequent years for additional hydrant replacements. So again, if you have any questions, um, feel free to reach out to Anthony or myself. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, trustees, as you can see, we are moving forward with improving the village of Soft Village. Know that along with the twenty-eight hydrants, that that one project that our engineer just mentioned, we have and will be placing in our budget our funds to replace. How many more hydrants? Finch, was it another twenty? Another twenty hydrants. We have so many hydrants that have not been replaced in such a very long time. We have so many that are not operable. So this is a very wonderful project. It's going to really increase the safety level of our residents in our village. And we know how many water main breaks we have. Last week, I think we had five or six water main breaks right after one another. So for us to start replacing our infrastructure, that's an area that's much needed, and we are moving forward with continued, continued improvement of the village of Soft Village. Thank you, engineers, for all the work that you provide. We thank you. Moving on, we won't have the police department tonight, but we do have the fire department. And so we're going to call Chief Sett Barrett before us.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Mayor, Madam Clerk, and esteemed members of the board of trustees. Uh, from August twelfth through today, we're responding to a hundred calls for service. Um, this demonstrates our unwavering commitment of safeguarding our community and ensuring the well-being of every resident. I would like to have you guys to mark this date. Save the date for the Sauk Village Fire Association. We'll be having our annual golf outing on Sunday, September twenty-first, at Lincolnos Golf Course located on Richmond Road and Creek. If you want more information, you can contact Battalion Chief Myers at the Fire Department at seven oh eight, seven five eight, two 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 five. I also would like to bring light to some concerning documentations. St. Margaret Hospital and Dyer have announced plans to cease operation with the effective closure date set for two thousand twenty-seven. I, along with the mayor and village administrator, have already begun discussions and are effectively working on plans to address the potential impacts this closure may bring. I want to assure you that the village leadership is committed to ensuring the ready for this transition. At this time, there are ongoing efforts to repurpose this facility into a behavioral health hospital. We promise to remain diligent in monitoring developments and will provide timely updates as new information becomes available. Our priority is and will continue to be the health, safety, and well-being of Sauk Village residents. I will also, if I can at this time, like to take the time just to say thank you for allowing me to serve as your fire chief for the last six years. It has been a pleasure. I will always be around. I'm going to remain diligent to making sure that our residents stay safe and that everything continues to move forward on our fire department. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Board of Trustees, and Madam Clerk.
Thank you. May I acknowledge him? Know that he's not going anyplace. He will still be serving with the Sauk Village Fire Department.
The time and distance to the closest hospital after they close?
After they close, the furthest, the next hospital will be St. James Olympia Fields, which is twenty-one minutes away. The other hospital is St. Margaret's in Munster. But we really don't want to look hopefully to that one because with Dyer closing, all of the Indiana towns are going to be utilizing that hospital. We do have another hospital right there in Munster, which is a community hospital. But we're not, Illinois departments are discouraged from going there. They don't replace any of our supplies, any of our lending. So it will be more costly to Illinois departments to transport to that hospital.
But in the time factor though, with the Indiana hospitals, are they closer in time or far greater?
They're closer, but most of, so there's going to be an expectation or anticipation of them being on bypass a lot because of so many towns traveling to that one. But with that being said, we do pick up our other brand-new ambulance on next week. So with us having two ambulances, that will definitely help us make sure our residents stay safe.
Thank you, sir, again. Interim Village Administrator Director Anthony Finch?
Thank you, Mayor, Madam Clerk, Board of Trustees, and Residents. First, I want to say, welcome to the new fire chief and police chief. You guys have a chance ahead of you. So do what I can to work with you. So welcome aboard. Quickly picking back on what Chief just stated. As we prepare for this hospital closing, the mayor and I did meet with the state representative last week. And one of the discussion that we talked about was working with surrounding community to figure out how communities like Sauk Village, Lynnwood, Fort Heights, Lynnwood can work together to maybe have a closer medical center in Olympia Fields. So that's something we'll be discussing down in IML with some of the elected officials to see with state or federal money, is it possible that we can get a facility that the surrounding communities around three ninety-four can use? So that is in discussion and anticipation, as Chief said, as hospital closes. With that, let me get into my report. You guys have the cash balance as of the twenty-second. I want to bring to your attention, because it has been mentioned twice, if you look on the cash balance report, you see that the water sewer is combined. It has always been combined. It has not been separated. For verification, you can look at the bank statement. That is something that has always been done. But if any resident or any trustees or anybody in particular would like to sit down with me to have understanding or have fund accounting actually worked, which is just the recording of revenues and expenses. Like I said many times before, I'm available anytime during the day, including weekends. So if there's a misunderstanding or some clarification that needs to be told, how fund and balance actually work, especially when it comes to the water sewer fund, I would gladly provide that information. Last week, I also mentioned a disturbing email that myself and the mayor received about one point three million dollars that was about to be taxed back to the residents of Sauk Village. I want the residents to know that due to the efforts that the mayor put in as of yesterday, eleven o'clock, that one point three million dollar burdening that was about to be taxed to the residents from the federal government has been resolved. So we're not on the verge of losing one point three million dollars. So I thank you, Mayor, for getting in touch with our particular agency. Because as I said before, not having access to portals and password made the process even more challenging. The final thing, we are waiting on update from Bank of Telly. Hopefully, I have it by next week right after Labor Day with respect to the two thousand twenty-one audit. With that, Mayor, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. There was a question?
Mr. Finch, I have a, I have a question. Could you put it in the box?
I sent it to you, yes. I gave it to you, no, I gave it to you Friday morning.
Does anybody have their cash report?
No.
Okay, we'll make sure you get it tomorrow because I have to take it back. Okay, I'll make sure you go ahead and take it back. I'm not going to be long.
Can you read those numbers into the?
The numbers, yes. So unrestricted funds, it says as follows. In a corporate account, three hundred thirty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars. In the CD, one million, fifty-eight thousand, twenty-three dollars. Water sewer, six hundred thirty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars. Water sewer E-Pay, two hundred thirty thousand, five hundred and two dollars. Senior Center, eleven thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars. For a total of two million, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars. In the restricted funds accounts, the CN account, twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars. The DEA account, twenty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. The TIF accounts, three hundred twenty-four thousand, sixty-seven dollars. The tow account, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars. The holding money account, ten thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars. The spending drug account, twenty-three thousand dollars, eighteen dollars. The spending money lender account, three thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. The fire EFT account, four hundred seventy-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And the MFT account, one million, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. For a total of two million, twenty-nine thousand, thirty-three dollars.
We're not matching what you're saying.
What date do you have on yours?
This says the twelfth.
I have the wrong date.
She said that she emailed it, but none of us had the current one.
And I will make sure you all have the current one tomorrow. Because I don't even have it for my box.
Okay.
You reset it because I just sent it to my emails and I didn't see it.
I had to, I give you one.
Yes, please.
What I'll do before I leave tonight, I'll give you one and put one in every single trustee tonight.
He said that he's going to put it in everyone's box tonight before he leaves. Oh, no. You have a couple of other things on your desktop as well. That was from a couple of weeks ago.
No, it was from the.
No, no.
And this, and that.
Exactly. That was old business and we left it there just so that you could still have it for your records. But that was when you weren't here.
Okay.
We're sorry, okay, for that misunderstanding. Okay. We're moving on. Nine E, Community Development slash Code Enforcement Director Hilda Fernandez? Please talk into the mic.
Hello, yes. Thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk, Madam Mayor, and Trustees. As of May first, when I first started, May twenty-sixth to August twenty-second, community development has generated over seventy-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars in revenue from building permits, business licenses, inspections, and contractors' licenses. We started doing our code violations for citations. We don't have court document yet. And also in our early stages reinstating our Sauk Village control. Also, as we were cleaning our department, we found some banker boxes. And in those banker boxes, we found open envelopes with checks. And these come from six months to a year ago. We are actively working to have them reissued because of course, after ninety days, they're no longer good. So we found over a hundred thousand dollars worth of checks from six months to a year ago. That would be all. Any questions?
Excuse me. Do we speak out? Thank you. Does that conclude your report?
It concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And know that we cannot wait to hear from all of those who submitted checks. Those were checks for business licenses, contractor licenses, and what? But likewise, when we found those funds, we also uncovered that they had their applications and they had not been acted upon. So therefore, when you hear of lawsuits against SaveBuild and BFF, know that that's the reason why we are reluctant to pay them all of the invoices that they're billing us for because they left that office in a complete shambles. And we're not willing to pay for their neglect because we know our village needs as many funds as we can garner. But then also, we owe it to our businesses, our homeowners, to provide the service that they've come to Village Hall, made application, and were not served. And that caused a lot of animosity out front. A lot of us scrambling, like, we don't see this information. We don't see the application. We don't see that you paid. So we thank you and your staff for the fine job that you're doing. Now it's time for reports and comments of the Board of Trustees. We'll start with Trustee Aretha Burns.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say congratulations to our new fire chief and our new police chief. We're looking forward to working very closely with you guys. Welcome aboard. Actually, my statement is just very simple. I'm a longtime resident of the Village of Sauk Village. I've been here for twenty, my husband and I. School board member Burns has been here for over twenty-six years. And in the twenty-six years that we've been here, we have seen a sharp decline in economic development here in our village. We've seen many businesses leaving. We have not had a lot of people knocking our doors down to get economic development. So to say that I'm disappointed in the fact that the mayor did turn this opportunity down is an understatement. Mr. Gerzic is already developing here in Sauk Village. He has developed the Sauk Point. He had wonderful ideas to bring to our village in addition to the three phases, which is the cannabis, the restaurant, the solar farm, the controlled storage facility, also the NASCAR indoor racing grocery store that we wanted to develop, he wanted to look into developing on the corner. A beautiful nightlife here for the residents. And so he had really wonderful plans for us. It doesn't, sometimes you have to be able to say, everything I don't want, but some things that I have to say yes to because so much more is going to follow suit. So that's an opportunity missed. And that's a lot of development that definitely puts Sauk Village on a map that we have not seen yet. So again, I am disappointed. But for our residents, we got to keep fighting. We want development here. And we will continue to hopefully encourage developers to come. So far, we are not favorably looked upon by developers because we have neglected to use the ones that has knocked at the door. So I'm disappointed, but yet encouraged that hopefully someone will come and want to do as much development as Mr. Gerzic had planned for this village. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Burns. And just for the record, I would like to acknowledge that I did not unilaterally vote not to bring in that development. Other trustees voted not to either. Trustee Johnson, no comment. Trustee Jones, no comment. Trustee Sack?
Good evening to those who are still here. Thank you for your diligence. I want to congratulate our new fire chief and our new police chief. Welcome to Sauk Village. It is going to be an experience that you will remember. And we will all enjoy it together. And thank you. That concludes my comments.
Trustee Sterling? Thank you. Trustee Dr. Tanya Winston?
Good evening, residents. Congratulations again to Chief Dam and Chief Sanders on your appointment. Since I've been in position, I have begun working on grants and grant writing. I submitted the first grant review to Mayor Campbell Pruitt today to read and review and provide some critique. This grant is through Comm Ed. It is for holiday lighting to provide the village with a certain amount of money to beautify and unify the village. So, boots on the ground. Have a good evening, everyone.
Reports and comments? Oh, scratch Board of Trustees. There should be committees and commissions. And the first one would be Chairperson Carol Coleman. Is she still with us?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, trustees, and residents. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and Anthony Finch for fixing our stove that we really needed in that facility in the senior center. Thank you for your help. Second of all, I wanted to let everyone know that we have a bowling outing on September seventeenth. It's from twelve to four P.M. at the Stardust. The cost is twelve dollars. That includes two games. It includes your shoes and food. The money is due by September twelfth. You can see me or one of my board members, vice chair. You can see me or one of my, uh, board members, um, Vice Chair Deborah Coney, or, um, another member of the board, Susan Drake, okay? That's September seventeenth. Next, we have our senior barbecue, which will be September twenty-seventh, right here in the park. It will be free music, free parking, free food for all seniors over fifty, okay? Also, see me, we need a head count because everything is going to be free, all food. Uh, please see me or Deborah Coney by September thirteenth, okay? And that event is from twelve to four P.M. Also, we still have our breakfast bingo, we have our game night. So with that, that will conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Is it possible that you will and can email flyers or information to the clerk?
Okay.
So that, by Friday, so that it can go in the salt talk?
Okay, no problem.
Thank you. Uh, Fire and Police Commission Chairperson Francine Anderson.
Hello, the Fire and Police Commission report consists of, we just completed a testing for the Fire Department on August the sixteenth. We had eight applicants to appear and only six passed. Uh, we will be posting after we have the interview, so we will have, uh, a listing in order to start hiring. That, the police department is currently working and trying to get seats for the academy for January. That should end my report.
Thank you for that. I do want to bring forth a couple of announcements. The first one, mark your calendar, for September the sixth, the police department will be sponsoring along with the South Suburban Humane Society, a dog vaccine committee, uh, vaccine clinic. It is free of charge from eight o'clock to noon. Even though they're hosting it and they're hosting it here, know that that clinic is open to all of Coop County residents, and they can only accommodate the first three hundred. So I would ask, and this is what I put on the South Village emails page, don't sleep on this opportunity if you have a dog who requires free services and vaccines, okay? And we are thankful for the police department for offering it. Let's talk about the corn and dog, yes, sir.
The lady for the dog.
I'm sorry?
The lady for the dog, paper dogs.
Dec- December, September the sixth. I believe I put flyers back there.
Farm.
Okay? So it is September the sixth, okay? Corn and Dog Roast, succulent corn, succulent corn. We will be offering that up. Our annual Corn and Dog Roast will be September the thirteenth. And guess what? We expect to see each and every one of you there, but we have a surprise for you. Well, it's really not a surprise, we're adding to that event. And I'm not going to talk about it. Why Trustee Sapp didn't mention it in her report, I'm not understanding, but can you talk to us a little bit about the music festival?
Hi, I can, Mayor, I just. Good evening again. So for the Corn and Dog Roast, which is, um, again, September thirteenth, it starts at twelve, it's from twelve to three P.M. Currently, we have, uh, for our Corn and Dog Roast, we're having hamburgers and hot dogs, corn and coffee, of course, and the.
The E-Lotus.
E-Lotus. Um, we have three bouncy houses, one video van, the Bronco Bowl, we have a face painter, we are still, uh, establishing how many dancing horses we will have, we'll have pony rides, and we're still putting together petting zoo. Uh, there will be a kid zone. There'll be a kid zone, and we'll also have an international DJ from, uh, twelve o'clock until four. We also have line dancing in between there. Line dancing instructions, I should say, for those people like me who don't know a lot of. And then there's a break in between, the fest starts at five P.M. For the fest, we have a music fest. We are having two bands, we have two DJs, we have two bands, we have our Return to Soul, which they play, uh, they played a lot of hometown sounds. And then we have, um, a seven-piece band called, um, Just Trish. They are saxophone, keyboard, drums, just beautiful band, uh, they have really good music, so they play all songs. We will still have the, uh, we'll have food vendors, there'll be no food vendors at the Corn and Dog Roast, of course, uh, but there will be information tables available, also that will carry on into the, the music fest. We'll also have the, the Bronco Bowl and the gaming van will also be available during that. We, again, I said that we'll have a kid zone, we'll have space fenced off, uh, to keep them safe and secure, and they can have their own little fun. Um, did I forget anything? Flyers will be circulating very soon. Give, give mouth and what? I can't hear. Did I forget something?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm sorry, uh, this is all.
Yeah, but it's not done. He knows better. Thank you.
I know, but he, boy, he's just talking.
So we are asking or inviting you to bring your tents, bring your folding chairs, bring your lounge chairs, bring stuff comfortable. Uh, we're still undecided on the, well, it has been determined if we're going to bring coolers or not, uh, but we are going to have food vendors. And I think that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Um, having concluded the business of the day, I would call for a motion to adjourn. So, may I have a second?
Second.
Who seconded?
I.
We moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
I think that we have a consensus vote. We do not need a roll call vote in this instance, so consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you for your attention, and trustees, we appreciate yours.